I'd like to call to order the regular meeting of the City Council of the City of Victorville. In the City Council sitting, that's the Library Board of Trustees, Southern California Logistics Rail Authority, Southern California Logistics Airport Authority, Victorville Redevelopment Agency, and the Victorville Water District. Concurrently, I would also like to call to order a special City Council meeting and a special closed session meeting of the City of Victorville. The first item is our public comment. Is there anyone wishing to address the council on any item now listed on the agenda? See, and none, we do have closed session. Andre?
Right, Mayor Cabralis. We have closed session items on the regular agenda. Item 2A, under the Airport Authority, is the same as item 3A on the City Council agenda. The facts and circumstances surrounding this litigation pertains to the contract previously entered into between the city and General Electric. As you are aware, we were claimed to be in breach of that agreement, and I need to advise you as to the status of that dispute. With respect to item 3B, we need, on the regular agenda, we do not need to go into closed session on that item at this time. Item 4 pertains to existing litigation, Grow Victorville Smart versus the City of Victorville. And then there are two closed session items on the special closed session agenda pursuant to Government Code 549569B. And we will discuss, sorry, subdivision C of Section 54956.9. Both of those items are regarding potential litigation that the city may engage in. To the extent there's any reportable action on any of these items, we will report it at the closed session. So that's it for right now.
Okay, we'll move into closed session.
You do have another item on the special agenda, item 2. I don't know if you want to do that before or after?
Okay.
Let me... It's the item regarding possible action regarding landfill expansion. That's also listed for your special agenda.
That item 2, that SDLE?
All right.
That item 2 on the...
Correct, on the special closed session, the special City Council meeting, item 2, is the discussion and possible action regarding landfill expansion.
Name of page here. It's this...
Oh, okay.
This one, right?
Yeah.
Yeah.
Okay.
This can be handled, Mr. Mayor, council, this can be handled. This is a, if you'll notice on the front, we have the special council meeting, 5:00 PM on item 2. If there's anyone, if there's no one here, or for some reason, is it appropriate, Mr. Attorney, to continue this and handle it at the 7:00 o'clock meeting?
Absolutely, you could open or we'd have the discussion, open the discussion item and continue it to the 7:00 o'clock meeting. Correct.
Just in case there are someone here, that me. I would like to just very briefly point out that, I believe it was the last meeting, that one of the council members, I believe it was Councilmember Caldwell, pointed out that he was aware of a notice from the Corps of Engineers in regard to the land use and an expansion project. At that time, neither I nor Engineering Department was aware of any such project. And he asked that this end of, this matter be looked into, and we bring this back to the City Council. The attached map and information is self-explanatory. And Mr. Blade is here, if any further questions in regard to this issue. Sean, do you have anything to add? Or, I'm sorry, was it? Okay, well, yes, if you would, for the council, please, to give a background. I'm sorry, Sean, I didn't mean to put you on the hot spot, I thought you had...
Well, seeing the permit from the Army Corps made us, planners, made us think that there's already a project approved, because usually, this is a result of a project and a condition of approval. So, I called the contact person on there, Nancy Cincinnati, from the county Solid Waste Division, and found out that the project was approved for an expansion in 2005, was her first comment. And then I contacted her and asked her for a little bit more details, a little bit more. She sent me the staff report, and it actually was June 29th of 2004, where a project for the expansion of the landfill in three phases was approved and is proposed. The expansion that's going on right now is only Phase 1. It's 67 acres, I believe, the existing landfill is approximately a little over 60 acres itself, so it's a similar size. The Phase 2 and Phase 3 expansions will expand the landfill to a total of 491 acres. And the graphics that you were sent, the aerial, I don't know if they have them in the back, if they could put those on the screen, I don't know if they were given those, do you know?
I believe they were, but they may have been prepared to show those at 7:00 o'clock.
Mr. Caldwell asked if we had any maps or something, so I threw together an aerial, which shows the existing landfill. The area just to the side is the existing expansion, or the current expansion, which is underway right now. And then the white boundary is the extent of what the future expansion will be. Then I put it on a graphic of what the council and the commission just approved as the Desert Gateway Specific Plan. This is the land use plan, that's the core town center aspect of the specific plan with the train station right at the heart of that. And you can see the bound, the outline of that, is the expansion, the future expansion of the landfill and its impact on that, virtually rendering the town center area unusable and unbuildable, the way it's shown right now. There are two alternatives for the train station in the specific plan, one southern, southerly in the city limits, which they had kind of said they weren't going to use a long time ago, and then one several miles to the north, just at the very limits of the specific plan boundary. So there all are alternatives to move the train station, but definitely, the main idea of the plan was to have it at this, this location. So that was, that was my extent of looking into this. I have the staff report, I forwarded that to Donna, I don't know if she got that to you as well, from 2004, where they approved the project through the county.
They're doing Phase 2, they're already involved?
Phase 1, they're in Phase 1 right now. Phase 2 is to the upper, would be the upper right, and then Phase 3 is the lower left. And that will extend the ability to use the landfill through 2047, I think, is the current year. And I asked if she had an idea when they would start moving into Phase 2 or Phase 3, and she could, the best she could give me was between 2010, 2015. And then one other comment that she said was that Supervisor Mitzelfeld is expected to ask the, apparently there's a partnership strategy implementation plan for solid waste for the whole county. That is the plan that they said, looked at every landfill in the county, and when it would need to expand, and they started working this plan that was done in the mid-'90s and then approved, this one approved in 2004. She said that he is going to ask that they relook at the landfill in terms of some of the things that the council members have talked about before, waste energy and other alternatives to, that would or could possibly result in shutting the landfill down prior to 2047. That was about the...
Yeah, I do. The study that they're relying on, they went back to the 1990?
She thought it was approved in the mid-'90s, this strategic plan.
Well, that's kind of an irrelevant study. I mean, the things that, the politics and the technology that have moved ahead with the recycling and all of the other aspects of waste disposal, that study is totally irrelevant. What we should be talking about is a brand-new site, where you're looking at 10% instead of 90% of this stuff going to the landfill, and a much smaller footprint in someplace other than where you currently are. You don't just expand what's already here and make it worse, so...
That was our thought, too, when we heard it was the amount that the cities are required to reduce their waste flow, you would not think the, but remember, it can service the, any unincorporated area in the county.
Well, I, I mean, this, this proposal is ridiculous, on the face of it, but the idea is that you go out and you create a new landfill that will be taking a totally different mixture of things. Even the contaminants that would affect the ground basin that you would be on in the future landfill would be much better and safer than using, expanding the old one. I mean, it's a self-defeating purpose to recycle the way they plant, and I sit on that board, as you well know, too, and, and take 10 or 15%, which is a totally different mixture of hazardous materials, probably a lot less than what we're putting in the ground today, and create a brand-new landfill that would be, that wouldn't be a threat to the ground basins so much as this existing one is. This, the existing one needs to cease, come down to the ground, and not happen anymore. And then begin to mitigate as best we can, whatever plumes are down there. I mean, I don't know that we can, but it's certainly not better to add more. It's better to stop, go to a new location in the county, and set it up. And that was what I'm hoping that this county will go for. This proposal is ridiculous. I mean, that's speaking as one member of the council, right? And I've been one member of the council, a lot of issues, so it didn't bother me.
The concerns that prompted me to raise this issue at the last meeting are concerns that I have raised periodically for several years. That landfill was cited, it was probably the most logical place to put it. There was nothing around, and there was... Times have changed, and that, that stretch of I-15 on both the west side and the east side, prime development land. When they did the study that you're referring to, Councilman Rothschild, there was no plans or vision for the Desert Gateway Specific Plan, or the Desert Express, or any of the other projects that we currently have invested so much time and energy in. If we don't stop the expansion of the landfill, it will gobble up valuable land that can be developed to create jobs and enhance the economy. Aside from that, having a huge landfill on the main entrance to the City of Victorville, I think, creates the wrong image for a growing, prosperous, progressive community. If we don't put a stop to it now, it's going to continue to grow and grow and grow. I'm also concerned, and I've not been able to verify it yet, because I can't get any real answers, but I have been told by more than one person involved with this process that the long-range intent is to close all of the landfills on the other side of Cajon Pass, and ultimately bring all of the county refuges to that landfill. That, to me, is treating the Victor Valley and the desert as a bastard stepchild, just like it has been for years and years and years. So, I think there's three reasons that we ought to move aggressively to not support further expansion of the landfill. I realize that the phase they're in is a fait accompli, but that doesn't mean that the phases behind that have to go and continue. And I think we owe it to the long-range economic potential of the Victor Valley to work with the county, to work with Supervisor Mitzelfeld, to find alternative sites, and, say, Councilman Rothschild, to explore alternative technologies, so that we don't gobble up a valuable piece of land that will be job generator if it's developed the way the specific plan and the Desert Express plan is envisioned. So, that's why I raised the red flag. I applaud Sean and Brian for getting on top of it really quick, and I guess, at some point, the council needs to have some type of a discussion of what, what the city's official position is going to be, if any. I mean, it could be that a majority of the council feels otherwise, and that's the purpose of these kinds of discussions, but that's the reason I've raised the issue.
Other, how many?
Well, I, I basically concur. I don't, I don't think an expansion of landfill makes any sense. An eyesore, in my opinion, and it ought to be moved. I just, I think we need to, need to oppose this, we need to work with our supervisor to, to get it moved, in whatever fashion is possible, through new technology or, or otherwise, but I worked, when I was on the Planning Commission, with city staff on making sure that this specific plan for that area moved forward, and I don't want to see it ruined by an expansion of the landfill, so...
It, it appears that the, the most immediate intrusion would be the Phase 2, because that's right, that board is right on that thing. And I, I agree with everything said, the, but it is in the county, I guess the only thing we can do is take a position.
Well, I would think that our sister cities should have the same concern. Apple Valley has the east-sided freeway, and so they're going to be just as visually impacted as we are, and probably impacted as well from a development standpoint. Although Adelanto and Hesperia are not adjacent to the landfill, the reputational image for the Victor Valley is of concern to all of us. So hopefully, with Supervisor Mitzelfeld expressing an interest and a concern, and cities of the, of the Victor Valley coming together, that, yes, it's in the county, but hopefully, if we all are objective and constructive in our thoughts, we can come up with the sighting and the use of technology that would make sense for everybody.
Our redevelopment agency, actually, Hesperia and Adelanto are players in this as well, in terms of our ability to expand and develop the redevelopment area.
Well, we're looking at perhaps getting the other cities involved. I have a mayor's meeting every, every month, maybe I can...
That'd be great.
With the consent of the council, I can just throw it out and, and, or just have a discussion on this, on, you know, how the rest of the cities feel. And I agree, you know, it is an intrusion. The only big question is, you still have that distinct dump there in...
Yeah, but look at, as bad as it is, look at the county staff write-up from 2004. They want to go from 67 acres to 341 acres. They want to increase the elevation by 52 feet, and go from whatever the capacity is right now to an additional 34.4 million tons of refuse. Well, they need that kind of a capacity, if they're going to bring all of the county refuges to the desert. Sizing of that would not, would not be needed for any long-term population projections that I've seen for the Victor Valley. So although it doesn't say anything in here specifically, it, it tends to lend some credence to the argument that, that some have made, that this expansion isn't just to accommodate Victorville or the Victor Valley, but to address a longer-range vision by folks in the Solid Waste Division, to get it out of metropolitan San Bernardino. And you look at the last bullet point, number 5, it says, "To provide solid waste disposal capacity to meet the needs of both existing and future residents and businesses in the region and the county."
And, and, and you're correct, you know, expanding out to over 400 acres is fair to be, and that's what they have in mind. Your consensus is, I'll start with the cities.
I think it's great.
I'm bringing up that the waste man, just had one, and missed that one, but the next one comes up.
And you have Apple Valley, who else?
Well, every city up there, and a few that are out of the region that wouldn't augneth hunt, but they certainly would have an opinion.
Maybe it would be helpful if there's not a meeting of the mayors coming up right away, or your, your committee. Maybe you could send a, just a brief letter of concern to Supervisor Mitzelfeld, so he'll know where Victorville is coming from, so it won't be a surprise.
Mayor Cabralis, if I might, I noticed from the attachment that there is, under the U.S. Army Corps of Engineers, a comment period that expires on June 2nd. Assuming the city is opposed to the expansion, it'd be my recommendation to at least get something on the record, noticing your concerns and raising the concerns, so that you're not precluded in the event, at some point, that, you know, that the people are non-responsive, you want to preserve your rights to be able to potentially challenge the Army Corps of Engineers in that process. And I hate to be foreclosed from doing that, because we didn't at least submit comments and preserve all of those options prior to June 2nd. So, if it's up, I mean, my recommendation should be at least get direction of staff to provide comments and concerns, so that we preserve that ability.
Well, yeah, I think we have the consensus here for, for that. Go ahead. Any other information on item 2? A call to order the regular meeting of the City Council of the City of Victorville. In the City Council sitting, that's the Library Board of Trustees, Southern California Logistics Rail Authority, Southern California Logistics Airport Authority, Victorville Redevelopment Agency, and the Victorville Water District. We do have a reportable action from our closed session, and I would like to announce, and it's my pleasure, and I'm related, that the city's negotiating team has reached an agreement with GE. It's been a long 16 months, we're, we're now have a mutual agreement that will resolve this issue, and I would like the, our city attorney to perhaps, in a little bit more detail, explain the, the conditions.
Thank you, Mayor Cabralis. Yes, this item relates to agenda item 2A on the Airport Authority, as well as 3A on the City Council Authority. The city has reached a settlement with General Electric. For background, the city had entered into a contract with GE for $183 million to purchase equipment for the power plant. City paid GE $50 million, but could not make the balloon payment due in the fall of 2008, when the credit markets collapsed. GE terminated the contract as a result. GE demanded the balance of the termination payment due, approximately $56 million, for a total of $106 million, but would not give the city any of the equipment. We finally reached a settlement agreement with GE, the net result of which is a $40 million settlement from the original down payment to GE for a portion of their costs, and it's only a portion of their, uh, total costs incurred, and a $10 million credit to the city for the future purchase of either gas or solar equipment to be used anywhere in the City of Victorville.
Thank you. At this time, we'll commence with the meeting, and we'll have the invocation, and that'll be led by Father Mark Lander from the Holy Innocents Catholic Church. That will be followed by the Pledge of Allegiance by our own Victorville Police Chief, Cliff
We often hear the expression that God is love, and the desire to make us share in this love, it is my belief, that He sends His Son into the world to come to our aid in gentle kindness, to help those who are weak, sick, or otherwise unfortunate. This is also the call of the prophets throughout the Hebrew scriptures, and so in God's great love for us, let us listen to the words of Isaiah. "This is the fasting I wish, releasing those bound unjustly, untieing the thongs of the yoke, setting free the oppressed, breaking every yoke, sharing your bread with the hungry, sheltering the oppressed and the homeless, clothing the naked when you see them, and not turning your back on your own. Then your light shall break forth like the dawn. And so we pray, blessed are you, Lord God of mercy, who through your Son gave us this example of charity and the great commandment of love for one another. Send down your blessings on these your servants, who so generously devote themselves to helping others. When they are called on in times of need, let them faithfully serve you and their neighbor. I am the United States of America, and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Tonight, we have several presentations, and so I'll step away from the daisies here, and make these special presentations for our military, and also for our Victorville Use Advisory Committee. The first presentations are for our military banner program, and again, these are the banners that are flown under street standards, for those in the military who are serving this country overseas in Iraq and Afghanistan. Tonight, we have, we're honoring, recognizing two military families, the family of Austin Martinez, and if I can have Vanessa, his mom, step forward, please. We're going to have the banner, of course, up under standards, but we also want to give you this recognition from the City of Victorville. And we'd like to thank you and Austin for your service.
Someone would have told me 27 years ago that my son would be in a war, I would have thought they were crazy, and had they told me he was going to volunteer for it, I would again say they're crazy. Fast forward to 2001, he was just graduating from high school, and had college on his mind, and Sandy... and San Diego State and the party school, and if you chose military or the party school, I wanted him to go to the party school. And he went into his counselor's office one day, and she had an Aztec banner up on the wall, a pennant, and she had gone to San Diego State, and she's, he told her that he wanted to go there, and he was going to apply, and she told him, well, it's a really hard school to get in, too, so if you do get in, come back, show me your letter, and I'll give you the pennant on the wall. So he applied, got in, went back, got the pennant, and it's in my garage today. And so fast forward to 2005, he graduated with a business degree, and job creation, and I thought things were going to be fine, got married to his high school sweetheart, had a child, and came home one day and said, this is for the rest of my life, and do want to do, and he said, I want to fly, and I want to join the military, and I want to fly Blackhawks. So there was still a little bit of hope, sadly to say, that I was hoping that he wasn't going to get in past those tests, past his psychs, the warrant officer program, and left for basic. And once he finished basic, he went to Fort Rucker and got into the warrant officer program, and then got into flight school, and he wanted one of the Blackhawks, and there was only five, so he needed to be top five, and he finished fifth and got the Blackhawk. So now he is in Iraq, flying over Baghdad every night, and thank God for the Army, they supply Skype, so it's like he's in my living room every Sunday. So, and I'd like to thank the City of Victorville for this program. It's really a great thing that you're doing for them.
Thank you. Next, we have the family of Joe Helio Smith, Diana. Mom is here to receive the recognition. On behalf of the city, please accept this recognition for your service.
Well, first of all, we'd just like to thank the City of Victorville for honoring our son, and it's been a long, it's his second tour in Iraq, so we just, we just keep him in prayer all the time because all our soldiers need our prayers, and, I mean, we're really proud of our son. I mean, for so long, he just didn't do anything, and it's just like a parent, you're thinking, when are you going to grow up, you know, and eventually, one day, he decided he wanted to join the military, and when he joined the military, when we went to a sea when he graduated training, I just saw a totally different person, I just saw just a man there. So I'm really proud of him, and just keep all our soldiers in prayer because they need it right now, so we just like to thank everybody for coming and honoring our son.
Thank you very much, and thank you, Joe Helio. We also have a special recognition here, and this is, these are the things that we would like to do because Sofia Vasquez Hernandez is here from Iraq, and she's on, I guess, on leave pending her transfer to Fort Hood. Sofia, thank you for your service, and I'm going to allow you to say a few words to the public.
First of all, Mayor Cabralis and fellow council members, I would like to thank you for honoring and supporting myself and my fellow service members. It means a lot when you have your city support you. Many people ask what it's like to be deployed. There's not much I can really tell you. The only thing I can tell you is unless you've been, there's no way to describe it, but I can tell you, it's very hard on your family. I have a daughter, she's three, and to be a parent in a different country is very hard, very, very hard. It's very hard to parent over the phone and to watch somebody else raise your child. Second, I would also like to apologize, I'm not properly dressed. I would have worn my uniform, but this was kind of last minute, and this is my second tour that I just completed, so I'm on my way back to Fort Hood.
Thank you. You don't have to wear a uniform. Next, we have recognition of the May Bright Light Citizen, and we have Richard Bo Bochikchil. Is that pretty close? Okay, Bo, okay, we know he is Bo, okay. And I'd like to read a little bit about what Bo has done for the city. I said, volunteer. Twenty years ago, Bo began devoting his spare time to the Victorville Citizens and Patrol, the COP unit. To this day, Bo, as he is affectionately called by Victorville station personnel, affectionately called, okay, volunteers an average of forty hours a month, and can always be counted on for assistance with anything from traffic control to sobriety checkpoints. It is the Bright Lights Committee's honor to acknowledge Bo as the Citizen of the Month. And you have this gift bag here, contains $20 in gift certificates, a casita, four movie passes to Ultra Star Cinemas, City Victorville blanket, one-night spa romance package from Hilton Garden Inn, Bo. How about that? And the Bright Lights program started during our State of the City address, and it recognizes amazing people in our community who make a real difference each day. These are the unsung heroes that volunteer their service on behalf of our citizens. So, Bo, would you please step forward, and here's your...
Very much.
(laughing). (inaudible).
Actually, somebody made reference to his muscles. That guy works out every day, I believe. You still work out, Bo? We also have certificates for a recognition for 2009-2010 Victorville Youth Advisory Committee, and I'd like to add that this committee came of suggestion from Councilman Brian McCackran, and has been going on for the year now, and we have certificates, and I would like all of them to come forward, please. I also understand they have a donation, and so I would like to spell this person.
We would like to present this check to Doreen Hardy of the Victorville Community Hospital Foundation for the Pediatric Fund for $400. As a YAC, we, we held a talent showcase with all our school's talents together, and we put it on, and we raised money for this to happen, so thank you for letting us be able to help you.
I want to thank you all so much for your great outstanding spirit of philanthropy as youth, the great role models you are to this community. Forty percent of our patients come from Victorville, and as I stated back in a meeting in February, many, many of those, great majority, are children and youth that we serve. So I thank you for extending yourselves to other children, other youth who need our services, and we're going to take you on a tour of pediatrics next week, as we spoke, and any other part of the hospital you'd like to see, so you can see the impact of your gift. Thank you so much for being a great example, and Councilman McCackran, too, for suggesting this idea. I'm not surprised. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Thank you for your service, and you are the future leaders of the city. Thank you very much. Next, we have a presentation from Nancy J...
Good morning, good afternoon. Mr. Mayor Cabralis comes back to his, the dais, and I'm supposed to tell someone to queue up the presentation. Major, excuse me, Mayor Cabralis, thank you for giving me a few minutes to give you an update of presentation in Edison and distinguished council members and public. Before I get started, though, I only have a few minutes to talk about a lot of issues, but I want to take a minute and preach to the choir a little bit. I want to thank you, council, for all the things you do in support of Edison. I also want to thank Bill Webb and Scott Webb in your planning department for their support in many of our projects that we move forward in your, in your city. Most of the time, I've been here ten years, and I have never had the opportunity to say publicly, thank you, but I do want to take a moment and thank your department heads. You have some really great people in your department that really assist us as we support your community, and that's John Gargan, and Yvonne Hester, and Amor Jaker, and Brian Gangler, and Sean McGlade, and others. So I just want to say thank you. And very quickly, I'm going to go through this presentation, and hopefully you have questions or... Just very quickly, this is Edison Service Territory, it's the orange portion of the Southern California Edison, Southern California. We service fifty square miles of service territory. What I really want to impress upon you in this day and age is that for a hundred years, we've done business per usual, but now electric technology is moving fast, moving forward. There's advanced technologies as it relates to smart metering, smart, smart grid, smart homes, generation technologies moving forward. So these are the things at high level that Edison is involved in and leading the industry in, much of which is strengthening our grid for increased reliability, bringing those technologies into the 21st century. We have departments that handle that. Again, we're in, we're investing in technology for smart grid, which will help isolate problems, help increase reliability, help us to, in our construction of new substations, wires, technologies, and advancement moving forward. The smart, what will the smart grid do? Basically, what it will do is help us to isolate problems faster, to again, increase reliability, help us to have a safer workforce, minimize customer outages, disruptions in services, make it more efficient, safe for our, our crew. Moving forward to all of our customers engaging in a number of smart technologies, one of the new buzzwords, if you will, is zero net energy for homes and businesses, and that is really very easy to do even in this environment, is to engage in the technologies that are available to help you get down, if you will, to a zero net, to where we're actually giving you a credit on your bill. It's interesting. In this environment, where it's very difficult for many of our customers to meet their energy needs and make, make payments on their bills, there's a number of opportunities for them to engage in energy efficiency programs and the care program, which gives our customers 20% off their bill for customers who are income qualified, energy management assistance for customers who, again, energy qualified customers, where we were able to, we are able to give them free appliances for their homes, payment arrangements. Again, the smart meter is, is here and it's coming. For Victorville area, the, we should be actually engaged in actually putting those smart meters in most of our homes the first quarter of 2011, and what that does, it will give our customers, our, our residential customers, an opportunity to put energy saving in their own hand. When the software is included in there, which may be another year or so, our customers will be able to see their energy in real time. I mean, they can see right now what they're using, not wait until the end of the month, and so it gives them an opportunity to, to actually engage in energy efficiency if they want to turn their air conditioning off, or if they want to use their appliances at a different time, so they can actually see that. And so that is coming. We've already, we've already put probably as many as 200,000 smart meters in the Edison territory, and we're moving very swiftly, so again, for probably the first quarter of next year, our residential customers will have that. Plug-in electric vehicles, this graph actually tells us, tells you that based on how fast the electric vehicles are coming, it could be as swiftly as from 2010 to 2020, the blue will tell you how fast you have to ramp up for that, as far as getting the, the technology into where the vehicles can actually be plugged in anywhere in the city or whatnot. And what we'd like to work with our cities is that many of these customers will go into, purchase these vehicles, and they may not know that they have to have an upgraded meter or something like that, so that is coming very quickly. We want to be ready for that, and so it's an opportunity for us to work with you, the City of Victorville, and your departments to streamline a process where our customers, your, 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 your constituents will be able to engage in this kind of technology without, you know, buying the car, coming home, and not being able to plug it in without certain supports. There are many projects that are, that Edison is engaged in, the City of Victorville. We are going to be sending, spending $6.2 million of infrastructure in the city current and in the future to upgrade current substations, upgrade distribution systems, so we have a speakers bureau variable. We have the opportunity for commercial customers to come to Edison and become suppliers for us. We also have an opportunity for 501(c)(3) organizations to come to Edison and request grant funding. There's many ways we're engaged in the community. As far as rates go, the most significant rate change will be for GS customers, GS1 customers, which are small customers, zero to 20 KW of load. They will see a rate shift beginning in June. Actually, there was a rate shift that was beginning in, in October. What we're going to be doing is to help them to, it costs us more, it costs us more actually to produce energy during, in the summertime, so this is actually to encourage our small customers, our large customers already have the time-of-use kind of metering to help shift their load, and so for nine months out of the year, their rates actually have gone down, and for beginning of June of this year, the rates will actually go up a little bit, and so this is going to impact our small commercial customers, and with that impact, we know that there are going to be questions. We have a lot of internal information in the company that can help them. We can actually put them on what we call a level payment plan. There's a lot of information to help them, so what they will probably see this summer is a spike somewhat in their rates, about 17% actually, but in the wintertime, which is beginning in October, the rate actually decreased 14%, so. And some of the helps for them. And we are leading the nation as far as renewables. We have probably 17% of our portfolio in renewables. And this is just a graph that tells you what the energy sources are in the state of California. That is very high level, very quick. Did I keep it to five minutes?
Go back to that one before, just for a second, one just before.
This one? This one? This one?
Wait. Five seconds. You had the graphs, the ones that I wanted to grab. There, stop. Just for a second.
Sure.
Okay. I got it.
And in the effort not to slay trees, I didn't bring a presentation before me, but if you'd like to have a copy of it, I'd be happy to give anyone a copy to that, who wants a copy. Are there any questions?
Yes, I do have another one. That P-E-V, P-E-V, the automobile electrical power generation that you had by 2020, do you have any idea what type of a demand on the grid that would be if you implemented that program full-bye?
So much, in fact, that if we have two or three customers who are on one circuit, a circuit actually is capable of powering about 10 homes. So if we have two or three customers who drive electric vehicles, and we don't know about it, it actually can overload a particular circuit. So we're looking at ramping up rather quickly, depending on how the market is. And we're actually going to be happy to do some upgrade in our, our own infrastructure to meet the demand for that.
Well, with California doing these self-imposed moratoriums on not getting an electron from a coal-burning plant or anything else, aren't you going to be generating more electricity internal to the state of California than looking for external sources? Just a general question.
Good question.
You can say yes.
Good question. We do a great deal to procure the energy, but what we're going to be hopefully doing is encouraging our customers at the same time that the demand is going up to engage in energy efficiency. So feast and famine, we're just going to have to watch it.
If we repealed AB 32, wouldn't that help your energy sources a bit?
Indeed.
Yeah, that's my pet project, repealing AB 32.
I understand. Thank you for your questions.
Her answer is yes, I'll answer for her.
Thank you.
Thank you. I have, I guess, a comment. At that meeting I attended in Marso, and your president indicated that you were now renting rooftops from the big boxes-
Absolutely.
-for solar. And that was, that was, I didn't know that was being done, but apparently, that's something you guys are doing, and something maybe that someday-
We're mandated by the state of California to procure 20% of our portfolio in renewable energy. And based on the contracts that we have for the end of this year, we will meet that. But one of the things that we, we have been allowed to engage in is what we call a solar rooftop program, to where if there are large box of buildings there, where we can actually put solar on and puts it straight into the career, that helps us toward our portfolio capturing. And that technology and that request is actually coming up to the High Desert. I got a phone call from the folks in the rooftop solar portion of our, of our Edison that asked us to look out for opportunities for that up in the High Desert. So it's here, and at every point where we can get that generation, we're going to try to do that.
Very good.
And thank you very much for attending a customer breakfast where our CEO did much the same thing, but he had a little more than five minutes. I was teasing. Thank you very much, I appreciate it.
We'll now go into the public comment section of our agenda. And anyone that wishes to speak on any item not on the agenda, it's Walk Meduso, you have to fill out a card just in the foyer. And right now, as I see, I only have one card, and that's from El Cotillo.
I have to, so you gotta yell at me.
Oh, okay. And you have three minutes.
Everything I say is my own opinion, number one. The first thing I'd like to talk about is when you're going to hire these new people on the golf course, I hope you don't hire all illegals like you did, I know you didn't know better. But the last time they were putting in the pipes, and them people were all from El Salvador and everywhere else, it doesn't give anything to the economy of Victorville. I hope you hire a company that hires legal Mexicans, or legal Americans, or legal Italians, or legal Jews, whatever they are. I hope they're legal Americans, so they will donate their money to the community and not send it to some other country. The second thing, the money from the state took from you guys, $13 million. I'm glad they did it, because I just want to know how you guys feel when the state says, "We're taking $13 million from you," and there ain't a damn thing you can do about it, whether you like it or not. Don't you just feel like you want to go over there and kick some butt? I'm sure you do. Well, how do you think we all feel when you spend all our money on useless things? $10 million for a clubhouse on a golf course that doesn't make any money? When you took over the water company? I don't know how you got that, but they had $60 million. Where's that? How about the airport? Why don't you sell the airport? Maybe we could get the city back in shape. That's where all our money is. Now, how do you think we feel when our hands are tied and there's nothing we can do when you spend all our money? That's our money, it's not your money. Part of it's yours, because you pay taxes, too. But I'm hoping you feel the same way when they took that $13 million away from you as we do every time you spend our money. The next thing, I have voted, ever since I was able to vote, now I have come to the decision that I'm not voting for anybody anymore. I'll vote for Ryan McCreech on the next, the next election, but I'm not going to vote for anybody anymore, because politics is so corrupt. From the federal government, all the way down to the cities, they're all corrupt. It is so corrupt, it's out of control. And they don't really seem to care. All everybody cares about is getting elected again. They don't really care about us. That's all I got to say.
We'll now go into the Library Board of Trustees. We don't have any revisions, we do have a consent calendar. Move for approval.
Number Caldwell, what is your vote?
My machine's not working, so I'll have to vote orally. I vote yes.
The next two agendas are the Southern California Logistics Rail Authority and the Southern California Logistics Airport Authority. And Councilman Terry Caldwell is the chair for those authorities. You'll share these agendas.
Thank you, Mayor Cabralis. The only item on the rail authority is the consent calendar, item three.
Move for approval.
Vote yes. Airport Authority Agenda, item three is the consent calendar.
Move for approval. Second.
Item four is the grant of easement in favor of American Bottling Company, Inc., Dr. Pepper, to authorize the chairman of the board to execute the documents. Motion would be in order.
Move.
Second.
Vote yes. Item five, approve the Second Amendment to the sublease agreement by and between SCLA and Mercy Air Services. Motion would be in order.
Move for approval.
Second.
Third.
I vote yes. Item six, the execution of the standard professional services contract with PB Americas, Inc. Motion would be in order.
Approval?
I vote yes.
We don't have the Victorville Redevelopment Agency. Do we have any revisions? I think, I don't think so. Item number four, the request to approve the execution of the Second Amendment to the lease agreement by and among the City of Victorville, the Victorville Redevelopment Agency, and the National Rail Passenger Corporation, Amtrak. And two, to designate the executive director an authorized signature of related transaction, transactional documents.
For approval?
Vote yes.
Chairman Cabralis, the consent calendar item is number three. That needs to be acted on as well.
I'll move for approval.
Councilman Caldwell?
Item number five, request to approve the grant of non-exclusive right of entry and identi, indemnification agreement by and between the Victorville Redevelopment Agency and Jacobs Project Management Company. And two, designate the executive director to sign over related documents. Item number six, request to adopt resolution number R10-002. It's a resolution of the Victorville Redevelopment, Redevelopment Agency approving an amended and restated loan agreement by and between the Victorville Redevelopment Agency and the Victorville Public Development Corporation.
Councilman Caldwell?
Next, we have the Victorville Water District, consent calendar. Move for approval.
Second.
Item number four is a request to ratify the approval and execution of the contract to BCI Construction in the amount of $99,463. For approval?
Second.
Item number five is a request to approve a change order for Royal Wholesale Electric Contract in the amount of $8,067.20. For approval?
Second.
Number six, request to approve change order to the Morrow Metals Corporation, and this is the amount of $36,825. Item seven, request to approve change orders to the Forecon Engineering Contract in the amount of $82,838.68. Move for approval? Item number eight is a change order for Landmark Structures Contract, and this is the amount of $313,828. Also, licensing the contract by 120 days.
Can I ask a question? Can I? Motion, okay. So far, what have we spent on this plant? Which is kind of lousy to throw at you.
This particular item is for the booster station piping that's related to the elevated reclaimed water tank. So the elevated tank was, was, um, $3 million?
$3.1 million.
$3.1 million? Mm-hmm. And this will allow us to boost the water that we receive from BBWA in the pond that is existing, and boost it up into the reservoir, so that we can gravity serve our reclaimed water customers.
You know offhand how much we spend on this wastewater?
Bag team here.
I didn't-
All of the construction contracts, plus all of the engineering, construction management contracts, I believe are still under 30 million. And so all of these change orders that you see coming before you are within the budget. Typically, when we award a contract, we'll request 10% for contingencies. And to date, we haven't exceeded, on all of the contracts that we have let, we haven't exceeded the 10% contingency. So we're still under the 30 million total construction.
I didn't mean to put you on the spot, but all these change orders, I look at those and I'm thinking, we've got to be-
That's why we put in the reports, the amount left over within that 10% contingency in each one.
Okay. Thank you. I didn't mean to put you on the spot.
Motion's in order.
So moved.
Next, we have the City Council Agenda. And we do have item number three. It's a public hearing. And this is a public hearing called to hear arguments for or against granting a franchise to Calnev Pipeline Limited, as set forth in the introduction of ordinance number 2260. I will now like to open up the public hearing. Anyone wishing to speak for or against item number three, please come to the podium. Anyone wishing to speak for or against item number three, please come to the podium. Hearing none, I will close the public hearing and ask for the reading of the ordinance.
Ordinance of the City Council of the City of Victorville, California, granting to Calnev Pipeline LLC, a Delaware limited liability company, its successors and assigns a franchise to construct, maintain, and operate pipelines and other facilities for the transportation of refined petroleum products for any and all purposes in, along, across, upon, and under the public streets, ways, alleys, and places within the City of Victorville.
Introduction to the ordinance.
The waiving of further reading doesn't-
Then waive further reading.
Second.
Item four is a public hearing to hear arguments for or against adopting a mitigated negative declaration for the proposed electrical infrastructure at the Southern California Logistics Airport. I will now open up the public hearing on item number four. Anyone wishing to speak for or against item number four, please come to the podium. Anyone wishing to speak for or against item number four, please come to the podium. Hearing none, I will close the public hearing on item number four. Ask for a motion.
So moved.
So moved.
Oh, yes.
Item number five is a consent calendar.
For approval?
Item number six, request to adopt resolution number 10-032.
Move for approval?
Second.
Oh, yes.
Item number seven, request to ratify the expenditure plan, and it's also an assistance grant in JAG allocation of fund for 2010, 2011, authorized as a city manager or is definitely need to process all documents for the program.
For approval?
Second.
Vote yes.
Thank you.
Item number eight is a request to approve the execution of the Second Amendment to the lease agreement by and among the city of Victorville, the Victorville Redevelopment Agency, and Amtrak.
Move for approval?
Second.
Vote yes.
Number nine is a request to approve the sister city agreement and designate a city of Victorville official to represent the city regarding sister city matters.
You never did this before? All these years?
Actually, what happened here is we've had, we had a resolution, and that's probably 22, 23 years, at least that, maybe 25. And we've had a sister city, but it was with a town within the municipality of Cabo San Lucas. Well, the mayor of Cabo San Lucas is actually the mayor for all these townships. And so he wanted to formalize it through his office. So this is just formalizes the agreement.
Move for approval?
Second.
Oh, yes.
We need to designate you?
Sorry?
We need to designate you? Because it says we're supposed to designate somebody?
Well, that's the council's. Only been doing it for 25 years. And by, for the record, I will be attending a meeting with them this coming Friday, well, I'll leave Friday. But all the funds are my own funds, so there's not any city money going to this project. Just for the record. Item number 10, it's a request to approve additional appropriation and award a contract to BCI Telcom Inc. in the amount of $890,958.04 for storm drain repairs.
Move for approval?
Second.
Vote yes.
Item number 11 is a request regarding La Mesa and Nescuali interchange in this agreement, and provide away service from Epic Plant Solutions in the amount of $88,000, and to extend the term of the contract until December 31, 2010.
Approval?
Second.
Item number 12 is a request to approve the construction cooperative agreement for the La Mesa and Nescuali road interchange between the city of Victorville and the state of California, and authorize the mayor to execute the agreement.
Approval?
Oh, yes.
Got something to say here in number 12?
Or 13?
Item 13 is a request for an additional appropriation in the amount of $250,000 to be paid in fiscal year 2010, 2011, authorized the mayor to enter into a cooperative agreement with the county of San Bernardino, town of Apple Valley, for final design of the Green Tree Boulevard Bridge and Road Extension Yates Road, winding in the Yucaloma Road and Bridge to utilize a 1 million federal CMAC grant made available through Sandbag. Do we have a report on this, Mr. Cox?
To mayor members of the council, we received the latest version of this agreement yesterday, and there were some comprehensive changes to the exhibit which shows the cost sharing for the entire project as well as the amendment. The amendment would cover the $1 million in CMAC funds that would go towards the design of the portion of the project from basically Ridgecrest West over to Hesperia Road. We're still trying to find out how they arrive at these numbers, so we're not quite sure. I think Carol Lee just handed out our version of the same distribution. The version that we received yesterday had zero contribution from the county of San Bernardino. We did not believe that to be fair, and so we have redistributed it. At this point in time, I think what we're seeking is some flexibility in working through these numbers. I think the risk is that if we don't take an action fairly quickly on this item, we are likely to lose the million dollars in CMAC funds. In speaking with Sandbag today, we're under the impression that if there is a consensus amongst the council to move forward with this, with the understanding that we could refine the numbers, they would hold on to that money. And so we're, again, presenting this to city council and seeking direction.
Mayor Cabrealis?
Yes.
I understand that the numbers are in a state of flux and that there's a need to refine it, and, you know, clearly I would expect you and your staff to do that. But I'm troubled by the fact you say there's a new version of the agreement?
More to do with the exhibit, the distribution of the monies. It's still an amendment to the existing cooperative agreement, which we are party to, which just covered the environmental. This amendment would cover the design portion, and then it had a new exhibit which depicts the distribution of the cost sharing. And it, just to be clear, there's a million dollars in CMAC funds, then there is the matching, the local match to that grant, and what we're talking about is the partitioning, the sharing of the match.
Last one I want to make sure is clear in my mind and clear on the record.
Yep.
I take it, then, from what you're saying, there is no substantive change in the agreement itself. This is merely exhibits that talk about the sharing of the financial responsibilities.
Correct. This is, in the verbiage, there is description of the cost sharing and the calculation, but the bottom line is that the exhibit attached to that mirrors what is in the verbiage in the amendment.
I guess I'm dense tonight. You've rephrased it, and I'll direct it jointly to you and to the city attorney. Are there substantive changes in the text of the agreement exclusive of the exhibits would talk about the allocation of financial responsibility?
No, and I don't think the city attorney has even seen the latest version.
In fact, I have not seen the latest version. Issue that you're asking us tonight, then, is to vote on that agreement without the review of the city attorney?
I think it would be with the city attorneys or with council granting authority to the city attorney for the word smithing.
Could make the approval if you so desire to be approval of the form of the agreement with such changes as are deemed non-substantive but approved by the city manager and the city attorney. That's typical practice in order to clear up what would just be non-substantive changes to the agreement.
I don't have a problem voting for approval, subject to the city attorney approving it as to form and content, so long as the issue I have raised from the very beginning doesn't slip through the cracks and that there is no language in there that binds this city council westerly of Hesperia Road. So if you're giving me that assurance, and Portnoy will look at that in that light as the viewer of the document, then at the appropriate time, I'm prepared to support your recommendation. Any other?
I need to comment on that. I know the council has discussed, mayor and council has discussed several times, asking staff to find an alternative route or to realign what would be the extension of Green Tree southerly to direct traffic southerly along Hesperia Road, so that it would proceed westerly on Nescuali to the new interchange. But the original agreement, and we have, kind of a point of contention, the environmentals terminate at Green Tree Boulevard at Hesperia Road. In other words, the environmentals that are being completed start at Yucaloma, cross north side of Springs Valley Lake, continue on what would be Code Road on the map, but would be the extension of Green Tree, and terminate at that intersection. Therefore, there are no environmentals that come westerly along Green Tree or from Hesperia westerly. And the additional design, Apple Valley, in the joint meeting that the council had, and that the staff have offered to front the money or have the consultant proceed with drafting of plans, and the plans would necessarily have to follow what has been environmentally approved. They couldn't have plans that differ. And Sandbag is helping with the CMAC grant, which would provide those funds actually to the town, which would be our share of the funds, to have those plans completed, engineeringally complete, but they would also terminate at the intersection of Green Tree Boulevard and Hesperia Road. There would be no plans either from construction or environmentally that would go west. That has been the exact language that's been requested by the council, that there not be a commitment westward Green Tree, and there's not. But it does go to Green Tree and Hesperia Road.
That's been my understanding the last two meetings.
I think the issue is one of the actual construction of that. If the city decides at a later date that they want to construct it elsewhere, then we risk having to repay some federal dollars.
Okay. Let me see here. I'll start with the document, this piece of paper you just gave me right here. At the very top of this paper, it says Yucaloma, Yates, Ridgecrest Road, Green Tree Boulevard. No mention of Nescuali or anything else. Again, I submit that putting 20,000 cars at the head of Green Tree Boulevard coming over the Yucaloma Bridge and not having a concerted identification at the corridor is Nescuali is a mistake. That's just the fundamental flaw right here, that there's no responsibility built into the county or Apple Valley when you keep labeling the project this way. So just from the label alone, I object to that because that's how we got into this problem in the first place. You got a million dollar federal grant that the county got, and a portion of it belongs to Victorville, a portion of the county, a portion to Apple Valley, a million dollar federal grant for environmental, and we have approximately a $200 million project from Yucaloma to the freeway, if you include Nescuali in that process. So we've got the tail wagging its hog again here. This is wrong. I'm not going to support this. Second of all, just as an example here, I have a problem with, it says right here, the bridge over the river, and they identify $51,000 of this environmental proportion. You could prorate that out for the construction project for the bridge itself. We still have not made a policy decision who owns the bridge over the river. It's either Apple Valley or it's the county. There's not one single benefit to any citizen in Victorville for that bridge over the railroad tracks coming off of Ridgecrest. So wherever that route is, and I hope it doesn't go where it's designed, but if that's where it goes, that bridge still has to be accounted for. Who pays for it? And I don't mean playing around with the color of money and making a deal behind, oh, we'll move 15 million here, 15 million there. It's a 10 to 15 million dollar bridge, probably, in round numbers, and I'd like to see this council at least make a position statement that that cost of that bridge belongs to Apple Valley and/or the county. And I don't care who pays what, but it should not be the citizens of Victorville giving their transportation money up for that bridge. And then finally, if we were to redesign it in such a way that we had to refund that million dollar grant, whatever prorata share that is attributed to Victorville ought to be paid for by the county or Apple Valley. In other words, the agreement should read that if, in fact, we redesign it in such a way that the federal government comes back and say, wait a minute, give us our million dollars environmental monies back, Victorville, excuse me, does not have to pay for that payback. That should be in the agreement as well, because the way it is designed now, you've created a corridor that has no inclination to direct traffic to Nescuali. Now, some of them may get there anyway, but whether the traffic is going to Los Angeles or whether the traffic is going to SCLA, and I think eventually, as the job creation at the SCLA picks up, more and more traffic will want to go right off of that intersection there and come into the city of Victorville, whether they run down through Old Town, whether they come down through the Royal Rogers, whether they come down to Green Tree. The fact is that a lot of traffic is going to be filtering through this city, 20,000 cars that ought to be going to Nescuali. I don't, I'm supportive of the project quarter. I know it sounds that I'm not, but I am. I think it's, excuse me, a necessary traffic, major traffic benefit, but that traffic must be directed to Nescuali. That's the only way it works for Victorville. Any other options are there, and Victorville is taking it all over. And if you're not on that side of the freeway, and I know some council members don't live on this side, and whether you have a million cars at Green Tree Boulevard or 20,000 or whatever, it's never going to affect their life. It's going to affect my life. I'm going to be right in the middle of it. So I'm concerned where that traffic is, and I have never had any subject come at me more from this city than this project area right here, and the citizens at least live on our side of the freeway. What are you going to do with those 20,000 cars? How do you get them? I said if they get to Nescuali, I don't think we have a problem. If they're not directed at Nescuali, we've got a problem. And it's a problem that's not going to begin to exist, but will grow in magnitude. So I can't support this that we've got on here, and specifically those things, this council needs to make a statement about the bridge over the railroad tracks, and I think the payback agreement, if, in fact, the route is redesigned, and there's options there. There are some options that could be made differently that would go away if those two other items are taken care of. So my vote on this is no.
Right?
Well, I'm ready to move on this item, but I just want to reiterate that Well, I'm ready to move on this item, but I just want to reiterate that I actually am in complete agreement, I think I've said it on the record, I don't know how many times, that the traffic shouldn't go onto Green Tree. I don't want it to go onto Green Tree. And I believe that our city engineer is capable of figuring out a way to redesign that intersection so that it doesn't go onto Green Tree. But short of that, I still think we need to move this forward, allow design to commence and be completed. And I would encourage our city engineer and staff to continue to work on the options and look at the possibilities of making sure that that traffic is directed southbound onto Hesperia Road or northbound onto Hesperia Road, but is not allowed to continue on. And you did provide a graphic in our agenda that showed the possibilities there. I don't know that it's perfect. I think there's still some, you know, ability to go straight onto Green Tree. We want to make sure we prevent that, but I think those things can be worked out. These type of intersections do exist elsewhere in the state as well as the nation, so I know it can be worked out. And Mayor Cabralis, if it's appropriate, I'll make a motion to approve this with the caveat that the city attorney and city manager have the ability to make non-substantiative changes.
Well, I agree. We need to move forward. We've had numerous discussions on this issue. And I for one, you know, it's going to end up at Hesperia Road, and maybe somewhere down the line it would decide it has to be moved, and that's going to be done. But I think you can mitigate, but whatever you do, the traffic is going to find a way to get to Green Tree. If they're going to Cosco, they're going elsewhere in central Victorville, they're going to find a way to get back in there. But again, I'm prepared to move forward with your recommendation and with the provision that the city manager and the city attorney look at that agreement and give the okay. Oh, okay.
Vote yes.
Item number 14, it's a request to accept and file a report on La Mesa and Nisqually interchange, First Assembly of God Church. And I do have, before we proceed, I do have Dr. John Martin from the church, which is to address the council on item 14.
Thank you, Mayor. Council members, last meeting, we had a chance to chat for a couple of minutes, and council member Caldwell asked that we would submit a letter. Letter was submitted to the mayor's office this last week. I trust that all of you have received a copy of that letter. On our behalf, we had a meeting, church and the city had a meeting yesterday, and out of that meeting, we are awaiting some action items that would be pending based upon discussion that had taken place. So just wanted to make sure that communication was coming forward to you. Thank you.
Mr. Cox, any report?
No, Mr. Mayor and council, that meeting took place. I spoke briefly with Sean McGlade. We are going to meet tomorrow and to discuss the requests that have been made as a result of that meeting. And then as a result of the request, we're going to be making every attempt to respond in writing specifically to each request made. And until we put together those specific answers, really not much to respond to at the present time. You have the letters and the correspondence. You also have from Sean McGlade, the write-up that started way back at 4/25/08. We're now two years into this on the various meetings that have taken place and the different requests that have been made. Staff must work within the parameters of the rules and regulations of the city ordinances and state law. And if there are requests made that are outside those parameters, staff will attempt to find alternatives possibly to that. But where provision is not allowed by city ordinance, it can't be allowed as part of the negotiated agreement. There's nothing further to discuss. If they make a request that's not allowed by the zoning ordinance or planning action, that's the end of it. That doesn't prohibit them or anyone from making a separate request to go before the planning commission or a separate request to go before the council, but it's beyond staff's ability to negotiate an agreement that's not in compliance with your directions, city policy, city ordinance, or state law. And we will follow those specifically.
Question? There is a request to accept and file the report. You have a motion?
Second. Vote yes.
Item 15 is a request to approve a settlement and release agreement between Christopher R. Morales, Inc. and the city of Victorville.
Mayor Cabralis, the record should reflect that this was a settlement of a prior closed session discussion regarding threatened litigation, this bidder had threatened litigation. The settlement of the litigation is essentially for the bidder to pay us the amount of $5,159.65, which is essentially the difference between his second bid. Net effect is there is no cost at all to the city with respect to accepting the settlement agreement.
Motion, do you approve?
Second. Yes.
Item 16 is a request to approve city staff to proceed with final negotiations with the number one ranked firm, Billy Casper Golf, for the professional management service for Green Tree and West Winds. And we do have Mr. Cox, staff report.
Mayor Cabralis, I've advised previously by the city attorney that I must recuse myself.
Mayor Cabralis, in fact, three members of the council have potential conflicts of interest, as does the city manager. The conflicts of interest with respect to council members, in fact, Terry, you can stay here for a moment, and Mike, if you would, because we need to draw straws.
We do. Well, not until, pursuant to the regulations of the Fair Political Practices Act, Section 18708, with three members having conflicts, there is the inability to proceed. Therefore, we need to invoke the, essentially what is called the permitted participation doctrine, legally required participation doctrine whereby one of you or you all will have to pull straws. Before we do that, though, we need to disclose the nature of the conflicts. Council members Rothschild and Caldwell both own properties immediately adjacent to the golf course, and as such, there is the potential that their decision on this may influence the value of their properties. Under the FPPC regulation, council member McCackren provides insurance services to the concessionaire at the golf course and accordingly may be impacted fiscally as well. City manager, Mr. Cox, also owns property immediately adjacent to the golf course, and therefore he is disqualified from participating in the discussion. With respect to the other three council members, I would like you to pull in a...
For the record, Charles meeting the council chair.
I would like you to...
I tried, but he wouldn't let me go.
Randomly select, and one of you then will be legally required to participate in the decision-making process depending on who pulls the lucky or unlucky tab from the city clerk. So at this time, she will pick a name out of a hat.
Have straws. I have a little piece of paper.
And I'll look at them now. One of you, I think, will say that you are legally required to stay. The other ones will be blank.
I'm out!
A black spot means what?
I told you it was your lucky night.
Thank you. I got it.
Now, for the record, we also need to reiterate that council member McCackren is going to be enabled to participate in the decision-making in accordance with Regulation 18708. Again, his disqualifying interest otherwise would be his insurance business, the fact that he provides insurance services to the concessionaire at the golf course. From this point forward, though, he is able to participate in the decision-making process as he is legally required to in order for us to move forward with this, so.
Item 16, staff report.
Mr. Mayor and remaining members of the council, I don't live on the golf course, so I had to stay. Due to our impending and ongoing budget issues, staff was approved to go out for an RFP for golf services, and we did that earlier this year and received back a total of 10 proposals. We sent the RFP to 38 firms all around the country and advertised it both in the newspaper and also posted on our website. We, of the 10 offers that we received, we received mostly management contract offers with a couple of lease proposals, and let me quickly explain the difference. Under a lease, it's fairly simple. Someone leases the golf course for a certain fee, or in one of the cases of the proposed leases, the lease would have actually cost the city some money. In a management contract, or excuse me, under a lease, essentially they act as if it's their golf course. If they make money, they make money. If they lose money, they lose money. Under a management contract, essentially the city owns the financials, is the way it's been sort of explained to us, wherein we agree to a budget, an annual budget for the golf course with the firm, and ultimately they need to meet those budget goals. They need to spend only those dollars that have been allocated. If the city, or if there is additional money made, if there is a quote profit, then the city would receive that profit because the city ultimately owns those financials. It provides some protection from the costs, but also provides the ability to ultimately make money in the event that the court turns a profit, so. The 10 proposals that were received were initially ranked by the four raters. We formed a committee. John Gargan, Director of Community Services, Adele Mosier, Assistant Director in Finance, John Mendiola, the Purchasing Manager, and myself sat as the committee. There were very clearly two tiers seen in the proposals that were received, sort of a top five and a lower five. The top tier were all firms that offered an attractive cost to the city, combined with a very clear ability to perform under the contract. We invited these top five firms to interviews on April 19th, and I'm pleased to announce, actually, that after the interviews, it was very clear that any of the five firms would be very capable and would be very good to contract with. We did all rank the firms, although there was a slight mix, the, all four of the individuals on the committee ranked Billy Casper Golf first, and this was based on their financial capabilities, their performance, their experience with municipal courses, their management team, and their ability to market the course as well, what course is. It was unanimous, as I said, with Billy Casper as the top choice. Let me tell you a little bit about Billy Casper Golf, some things that were both in their proposal and also some of the statements that were made during the interviews, and then, of course, we did some follow-up with some reference checking and things. And in fact, I would mention that although we didn't ask them to speak, there are members or, excuse me, representatives from Billy Casper here. If you have any questions of them, I'm sure they'd be happy because thus far they've shown a great excitement to get started on this, so. They manage approximately 120 golf courses nationwide. There was a minor error in the staff report. We apologize for that. We were on a severe time crunch to get the staff report in, so the staff report mostly tried to touch the high points of the discussion. Over half of those are municipal courses, including eight in Southern California. Adele Mosier, our Assistant Director of Finance, studied their financial, confidential financial information very closely, and they, their assets and equity were far greater than any of the other bidders in the RFP, or at least the ones that we ultimately interviewed. The liquidity ratios provide an assurance that Billy Casper will be able to perform under this contract. According to the presentation that he gave to us, and we saw plenty of evidence of this, only one of their courses is essentially at a break even, roughly $20,000 up or down each year, sometimes up, sometimes down, so essentially break even. All the rest of their courses operate at a profit, something that has been years since we've had a profit, if you will, in Victorville golf. They also provided the most detailed information about marketing the course and their player development programs, and showed the proof that it did, that those types of programs have worked at other locations. One of those is actually Ashwood in Apple Valley, formerly known as the Jess Ranch Golf Course, I believe. One of our other respondents, actually, who we interviewed, told us that they had spent, I believe it was the last week or so, in the Victor Valley studying the other golf courses, looking at the competition, and surprised us a little bit by telling us that Ashwood was really our competition, and we don't, never really considered Ashwood our competition over here. The reason why they said that that was our competition was because of all of the player development activities that were going on that was literally filling the golf course at Ashwood on the weekends, and that their plan was to sort of try to emulate those player development programs here at Victorville, both at Green Tree and at West Winds. So it was interesting because I don't think, they obviously didn't know that, in fact, one of their competitors in the interviews that day operates Ashwood. So we could, I suppose, recommend to you the ones that were emulated, or we could recommend to you the ones that are actually operating. And I don't know if you're going to get a stronger recommendation than quite literally one of Billy Casper's competitors talking up Billy Casper's programs, so. Billy Casper Golf has pledged to work very closely with the men's and women's club as their quote "most important customers." In fact, because we know that's of great importance, spoke to the council and to the men's and women's club, we included just a quick statement in the staff report that was included in their proposal regarding their interest in working with the men's and women's clubs. Billy Casper wants to open West Winds as soon as possible, which was a plus in our eyes, and I would believe it would be a plus in your eyes as well. Billy Casper, as did all of the proposers, actually, wants to interview all of our employees who otherwise would be out of a job, to kind of assess their skill levels and attempt to hire them to work either here or, I suppose, potentially at one of their other courses. They want to work with our existing concessionaire. We signed a three-year contract with Rose Rainey approximately a year ago, and I believe there's about two years remaining on that. They would likely, through the negotiation process, take over or assume that contract from us. Some of the references were actually rather, well, I shouldn't say surprising, because we were very impressed with Billy Casper. One of them was Cook County, Illinois, the county area that surrounds Chicago. They have multiple courses, a total of 10 golf courses with Cook County. They originally had signed a 10-year contract with a 10-year option after that was done, and they actually, Cook County exercised the 10-year option after year six because they were so happy with Billy Casper's performance to that point. Cincinnati Recreation is another one of their customers. In fact, if you look at the map, I think it's on your screen, I know it's back here, it'll give you a sense for all of their courses. One of the, one of the questions that we had was, you know, if you're operating Ashwood Golf Course, how are you going to operate Green Tree and West Winds at the same time in a competitive market? You can see by the cluster there in the little breakout window around Chicago and then slightly smaller in Cincinnati, that they're operating 16, 15, 16 golf courses in the Chicagoland area, and then another, I believe it's, it looks like eight or nine or so in Cincinnati area. So all of their courses are marketed individually. They operate with Billy Casper Golf sort of in the background. It's not all quote Billy Casper Golf courses. Ashwood, if you went over there today... Ashwood, if you went over there today, you probably wouldn't really notice that it was a Billy Casper Golf Course. It is Ashwood. It is branded as Ashwood. So, Green Tree will be branded as Green Tree. West Winds will be branded as Green Tree. But we would have the organizational backing of the full Billy Casper organization. One of the comments from Cincinnati Recreation was kind of interesting. They hired Billy Casper when Billy Casper only had about 20 or so golf courses, and now they're up over 100, as you see. They said they aren't bidding on your course because they're trying to grow. They're bidding on your course because they want it. They don't need one more, two more courses. They see a potential there, and they want to maximize that potential. Nothing but glowing reviews, including, you know, we called both the references they provided, but then also other golf courses in other cities that they hadn't sort of listed on the reference sheet but were clients of theirs. Ultimately, Billy Casper was rated the highest in every aspect studied by the committee. They are excited by the opportunity that both Green Tree and West Winds present. So, the committee is requesting that the council approve us moving forward to negotiate a final agreement with Billy Casper Golf. The initial dollar figures that they provided, that still need to have some final negotiation, would provide approximately $620,000 in savings to the city over the current operations. And so, we're just looking for some direction on how to proceed.
You have a question?
Yes, please.
Go ahead.
If we move forward on this, we're just giving direction to staff to move forward as far as negotiating cost, and there's no subsidy involved anymore from the city?
There would still be a subsidy involved from the city. There would be a cost involved. But the cost this year is about $1.2 million. That would be cut in half, essentially half, for next year, and then trailing off down to hopefully zero in year five. The original performance that they provided are very conservative on their part. They believe they can beat those. Several of the other municipal golf courses that they took over, that we spoke with, talked about a two- to three-year time in which they went from losing money to making money. We're hoping to have something similar happen here.
Before you move forward, would you bring back the figures that you come up with after you speak to these gentlemen?
Absolutely. We would bring back the final agreement with all of the final figures and everything. Our goal would be to implement this for a July 1st transfer date and have them start operating as of July 1st. First goal would be to try to get back to you two weeks from now, on June 1st, with a final agreement. They have 120 clients, well, 120 golf courses, probably 100 or so clients, so they've got quite a bit of experience with these agreements. We have copies of several. And in fact, Mr. Gargan and Mr. Mendiola have already started pulling out the pieces that they like and trying to put something together.
I think this is great, and I say let's move on, move forward.
I have a question, and you mentioned the subsidy that we cut in half, and as, I guess, the processes that should go forward, you start making money so you can reduce that.
Exactly. In fact, one of the other proposers, the one that was ranked twice, or excuse me, ranked second, would provide a greater savings to the city in year one. Over the five- or 10-year term that we would be looking at, ultimately, we believe that the Billy Casper proposal reaches that point and passes it, and gets the city to a point that we ultimately are making money on the golf course and can begin to repay some of the debt that essentially resides in the golf course fund because of years of subsidies.
And as far as the employees, that include everyone from the top, whoever's out there managing to the labor?
Yes, it includes interviews for everybody. We can't have any guarantees of jobs or pay rates or anything like that. But ultimately, their statement was that our employees right now know the golf course the best, so they would be looking to hire our employees in order to continue to maintain it.
Now, I might have missed something, but the banquet facilities, is that a part of it or not?
Ultimately, we would likely negotiate that into their contract to have them oversee it so that we're not a middleman between them and Ms. Rainey. But to do that, we would probably negotiate a transfer of that contract from a city contract to be their contract, and they would assume the remaining two years of that contract. It's the easiest way to do it.
Well, I think it's time to move forward. You know, we've lost money on that course, and you know, and it's something that's nice for the city to have, but we have been losing money for all these years. Get us back to our...
Back to the screen to vote.
I'm surprised Chicago has that many. That's where I'm from.
Okay. And item 16, is there a motion to approve the request?
Go forward.
Go get the other council members and the city manager.
I'm going to hold on to this little piece of paper because I doubt that I put you on golf course vote on 5/18/2010. I doubt that this will happen again anytime soon.
Gentlemen, thank you for being here tonight. We appreciate your presence. Thank you.
We're waiting for a plus sign instead of a minus. I will come out there and shake all your hands the day that happens. Been a long time.
It appears, being the last item on the agenda, they took advantage of that and left.
All three of them?
There's nobody back there.
Okay. Item 17, presentation and report from council members.
I think Ryan, myself, and you should be excused next time.
I do have one item. Friday is the Mountain Desert Committee for Sandbag, and they've requested the city manager and two council members to be at that for a discussion on the Yecoloma-Yates Road-Green Tree alignment, what we're doing there. And I think the supervisor's going to make a presentation on how he intends to help fund that and help us get that built. The mayor's not going to be in town because you're heading down to San Lucas, and actually, the city manager won't be there, but our city engineer will be there. So, Joanne, in light of the fact that the rest of them have left, could you possibly be there on...
I didn't volunteer. Yeah, just give me where...
Okay. I'll get you the information.
I think it's very important that we have...
No, I'm only kidding. I'll go.
That's all I have.
Joanne, anything?
No, I have nothing. I'm not going to say anymore.
Okay. I would just like to, well, thank Ryan for the contribution to our, we can't call it PEL, how can we call it FEL? It's our police and fire athletic league, and we're moving forward with the building and some of the funding, so it's going to be a great program for the city of Victorville, not for the city, but for the young people in the city of Victorville. Thank you very much, and stand adjourned. Thank you.